Order of the June 13, 2017, meeting of the City Council of the City of Fredericksburg. We will be led in invocation this evening by Counselor Matthew J. Kelly, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand if you wish.
Most merciful Father, please bring comfort to those in pain, bring peace to those in distress. Please be with our men in uniform, both home and abroad, and bring them home safe to their families, and also be with their families during these trying times. Please give us the wisdom to make decisions based on the benefits to our entire community, and always remind us that we are here to serve and not be served. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow.
Thank you. We have one public hearing tonight. Madam Clerk, would you read item 5A?
The City of Fredericksburg proposes amendments to the City Code, Chapter 72, Unified Development Ordinance, to change sign regulations. The proposed regulations remove content-based provisions in accordance with the United States Supreme Court ruling in the case of Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona. The current sign regulations are to be repealed and replaced with the regulations that prescribe the area height, number, and construction type of permitted signs. Establish illumination standards. Identify prohibited signs. Exempt certain signs from issuance of a zoning permit. Define criteria for the display of temporary signs. Create, delete, and alter definition. Consolidate sign regulations into Section 72-59. Consolidate measurement calculations into Section 72-82. Update non-conforming sign regulations in accordance with the Code of Virginia. The amendments may prohibit or alter the display of electronic variable message board signs in all zoning districts. Lighting that outline ornamental features of a building in all zoning districts and illuminated signs within a building located in the historic district.
Thank you. Ms. Sherman?
Thank you. You all have seen this topic before you, before your work session in December. It's come a long way since that initial draft, and I'll try to briefly go through some of those for you. But to give you a little bit of a background, the U.S. Supreme Court has made several changes to the First Amendment law, including the decision regarding local sign ordinances. One effect of this explicit -- one effect of this is the explicit invalidation of local ordinance regulating signs based on their content. We had a number of cases in our current zoning ordinance that we do specifically call out what you can say and how it can be displayed. That's the main purpose of this text amendment. But there were additional amendments proposed with the draft that initially went to the Planning Commission and that has now come before you. So our goal at the beginning was to maintain what was currently exempt, maintain what was currently prohibited, and to just make changes focused on the Supreme Court ruling. But again, we did take the opportunity to make several changes that we thought were appropriate at this time, and based on public feedback, the Planning Commission had a few more to add. So we did present an initial draft to you in December. Following some review and comment by you all, I think your two main points that you wanted us to take an additional look at were addressing illuminated signs located within a building in the historic district, and whether or not it would be appropriate to allow sail or feather flags in certain zoning districts. Those following your initiation in January, staff did take it to the Planning Commission. We also took it to the Architectural Review Board in April. They weighed in on a few things. Specifically, they reviewed our new language in the exempt sign section, which they were fine with, and whether or not it would be appropriate to continue the prohibition on lighting that outlines buildings or ornamental features. They did feel like if we were to allow, if the city were to allow lighting on the inside or outside of buildings outlining ornamental features, that it could be a detriment to character-defining features of that building. They also weighed in on the proposed prohibition for illuminated signs within one foot of windows inside buildings in the historic district. That was one of the things that came out of your initial review. And they felt like that was not a direction that the city should head. They notably said that in the historic district, signs have been historically lively and rich, and that neon is a character-defining feature of several architectural styles. We also, staff also coordinated with the Fredericksburg Main Street in April, who has weighed in, most recently last week. I think that that letter was included in your package. And then we held several meetings with the Planning Commission. We had three separate public hearings on March 15, March 29, and May 10. Through the course of their review, at those three meetings and then in between, the public did offer substantial comment. We had eight different speakers speak at the different meetings, and over 25 emails from business owners, residents, and interested parties. And the four main topics that folks were really focused on were whether or not the city should change its regulations pertaining to electronic variable message board signs, lighting outlining parts of a building or ornamental features, illuminated signs located inside of buildings within the historic district, and sail and feather flags. So there was a lot of time taken, a lot of public input on both sides of the table. And the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the attached draft at its meeting on May 10, deciding on the four main topics. So for the electronic variable message board signs, the Planning Commission recommends restricting the usage of signs to institutional uses and gasoline sales in various zoning districts with certain criteria. Limiting them to freestanding signs, limiting the square footage that can be used and dedicated towards these variable message displays. That's in our current ordinance of 40 percent of the maximum permitted sign area. Regulating sign changes to not less than an eight-second cycle, and to mandate that all existing electronic signs that are out there today on the previously approved five-second cycles be changed within one year of approval of the ordinance to the eight-second cycles, and to limit sign displays to black, to a black, non-illuminated background with one single color for what they're displaying. I think that one of the concerns by the Planning Commission and by the public is, not only do you have a variable message sign that changes every eight or five seconds, but it's essentially glowing. It's this big, giant, glowy billboard. And so that last criteria to basically say, okay, you can have a black background, you can choose the color, you can have one color to display, really limits the effect of how bright it is on people looking at it and the neighboring properties. On the second topic regarding lighting outlining parts of a building or its ornamental features, the Planning Commission recommended to maintain the existing prohibition for that lighting on the exterior of buildings only. So they are proposing a change to now allow lighting on the inside of windows. For the third topic about illuminated signs located inside of buildings within the historic district, they felt like our current prohibition, our current allowance of these signs should continue, along with the criteria that when people have these illuminated signs inside of their windows, they still should not be able to display flashing intermittent lights, changing degrees of intensity or any animation or similar features. And then in regard to sail signs, there was a request for the Planning Commission to consider removing the prohibition of those types of signs, and after a lot of consideration, they decided that the city should maintain that current prohibition. So staff does recommend approval of the attached ordinance. However, I do expect that there will be public comment that we receive tonight that may generate the need to hold a separate work session to discuss this further before you take any action, and staff is available and ready to assist you through that process. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Before I have counsel ask questions, Mr. Johnston?
I just wanted to add, it's come to our attention that some of the aspects of what the Planning Commission did at their meeting was not fully understood by members of the community, and we certainly did not want to represent that any previous comments of support to earlier drafts did not extend to what the Planning Commission finally approved. We understand that maybe some folks didn't understand exactly what the Commission finally did when it came particularly to the electronic message board signs, and we do have every intention to work with those folks, as well as members of counsel, that may have concerns about that, to sort of work through those issues.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sherman before I open it to the public? Any of the members of the council have a question? All right. This is a public hearing. Please, when you address the microphone, give us your name and your address, and restrain your remarks to five minutes. The clerk will give you a warning if you're within 30 seconds of that period of time. But any member, anyone here who would like to speak to the sign ordinance may do so at this time.
My name is Abby Betham. I'm a Fredericksburg city resident. My address is 3 Matoka Court. I also am a business owner here in town, the owner of Bistro Betham and Vivify Burger, both located on William Street. First, I wanted to thank Ms. Sherman, as well as the rest of the Planning Commission, because I know that they've worked really hard to try to take all the comments and propose a fair and reasonable plan for how best to assist counsel in the future with regards to lighting. I tried to wade through all of the literature, and to be honest, without completely understanding all of the verbiage, I wanted to talk personally about how the proposed lighting change would affect myself and my business. As mentioned before, I own two restaurants here in town. Bistro is an 1832 building, and the style of the dining does not lend to having an illuminated sign in my window. Therefore, as we are tasteful and thoughtful in our space, there isn't one. Vivify, on the other hand, on the other side of the street, is a more recent restaurant, and stylistically, it's very different. We used a local artist and a local sign developer to custom-build an illuminated sign that, in my opinion, is very tasteful, fits with the street's facade, and advertises the main highlight of our business there, which is the rooftop deck. We spent two months creating the sign. We're proud of how it looks, and it would hinder, if we had to remove that, it would hinder our ability to tell people there's an added space to our restaurant. I hope the council's careful with how stringent they make the rules for downtown business owners to operate successfully. I very much appreciate that we have a special place, and the balance is hard to achieve with the historic, as well as the inevitable growth and economic development. Illuminated window signs can be done tastefully and provide a character to the downtown businesses in a way that is positive. When I drive down Carolina or William Street, I'm personally not bombarded with a sense of too much glow. Rather, in the holidays or otherwise, I think it's nice to see the character and the creativity that many of the shops use to set them apart. So in my talk here, I'm asking you to support option one on the proposal in regards to illuminated signs located inside of buildings within the historic district, and have no change from the current code, that they should be allowed to exist. And of course, for my benefit, at the very least, I would hope it could be grandfathered in there, that they can stay. But I don't know if that's part of the verbiage there, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betham.
My name is Bart Goldberg. I'm a downtown resident, and I own the card seller at 915 Caroline Street. I just have brief comment that I'm a small business owner, and in this economy, it's a challenge to maintain and stay here. And right now, we're pretty full downtown, and that's a good thing. It bodes well for all of us. I'm going to address mainly the interior lighting. One thing that a lot of people want is more businesses to stay open later, and I'm one of the businesses that does that. With a lot of businesses closing earlier, people assume that stores are closed, and if I don't have a way to light up my window and show that I'm still open beyond when other people are, they're just going to leave and not come shopping. So I think that's important, to allow us to have some discretion inside and be able to advertise our business and show that we are open for business and advertise some of our products. So I think it could create a hardship for some small businesses to not be able to do that. And I never really thought that was a problem, so I was surprised to end up here and confronting that, because I think downtown looks great and don't really see where it needs to be changed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Kyle Caravan, and I'm the owner of Benny Vitale's. It's located at 722 Caroline Street. I just wanted to take a few moments to express a few of my thoughts and my experience, most of which was stuck inside the pizza place for quite some time. So the email that I wrote last month, I just wanted to reiterate a few words. When we first opened the restaurant just two and a half years ago, there was immense excitement surrounding the fact that we were going to be another downtown business that stays open past 5:00. The phrase "roll up the sidewalks" used to get passed around quite frequently regarding the fact that it appeared that there was not much to do here at night. There weren't that many people out and about, and we even had customers who were concerned for their safety, being downtown at night. In the past two and a half years, the energy downtown is, I've seen it, it's growing and growing. People are discovering more and more reasons to visit downtown, and I would argue that having illuminated open signs is a quick way for people to see that places are open at night, especially with the high number of tourists that the city receives. While I've been considering this for the past couple of months, I just wanted to, a couple of thoughts that came to my mind, a few points of reflection. The downtown historic district is still advertising and putting up open late flags to encourage people to come downtown after 5:00. So obviously, business owners still feel the need to try to attract more customers late at night. Number two, all over the news these days, retail stores are dying. We should be doing everything we can to keep our retail stores open, which make the historic downtown such a vibrant community and retail destination. Number three, what, I don't know, this is just going by what I've read online, but it sounds like the City Council developed a funding request this past March for the installation of new LED streetlights to replace our aging street lamp system. This work will require opening up the sidewalks to upgrade the wiring underground. So just a thought that maybe we revisit this issue after some of this lighting upgrade has taken place. So that's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Good thoughts. Thank you very much.
Mayor Greenlaw and counsel. Mary Repass, my business is Blue Shark Antiques at 904 908 Caroline Street. And how I became very interested in this was the report that I got, and our business was one of the businesses that was featured, with a picture that showed that we had lights outlining our windows on the inside. And so this is why I came to Planning Commission and did speak about this. And I wanted to continue and explain to you why we have this. We do have the soft white lights that outline our windows. This began with a Christmas project two years ago, I think, when the businesses were encouraged to put lighting around the windows, and we had such good response and compliments about it that we really realized, as dark as our windows are, because we only have light bulbs around, a few light bulbs around because of the electrical system there, that this really brightened up our windows, and we did get quite positive comments. It sounds like that the Planning Commission has agreed, you know, that this maybe isn't a problem, but I would like to explain to you why we use them. One is for business, as I said. It brightens up our windows particularly because they're sort of on the dark side, because we have an alcove there. And it's amazing how many people shop at night. We get calls the next day, or we have people come in that say, you know, "I was out looking at your windows and see something." So illuminating your windows at night, I think, is very important. Also, I think it contributes a little bit to the brightness of the streets there. And I certainly don't want downtown Fredericksburg to become a Las Vegas. I was looking at the lights tonight as I was coming in, and as he was saying, his card sellers he has open, I think we have two other opens, lights on 900 block of Caroline Street. One is the flower shop, and one is another antique shop that has a small, open sign there. They are not flashing, and I don't think they draw, you know, a huge amount of attention. And then I also was noticing that the flower, or the dress shop there on the corner of Georgian and Caroline have spotlights that go down on their mannequins, which, again, I think, you know, is very important for nighttime buyers. Then the second reason I gave was safety. And again, we have sort of an alcove there, and I guess it was about a year and a half or so ago that we had someone put their fist through our plate glass window. They decided that would be, I don't know why, but they decided to do that that night. Then about a month ago, or six weeks ago, the place next door to us, Caroline Square, also someone broke their window. And so the way that our alcove is, it's, it's sort of, brightens up that alcove in a way, and it sort of helps. In the mornings, we can, before, it seemed like we, people gathered in our alcove, and we found many interesting things during the next morning and so on. So a little bit of it is safety, particularly in the winter, when you have a little bit more light there. And overall, we at Blue Shark will certainly comply with whatever you all decide, but I hope that, you know, the decision is made that subtle lighting, something that isn't blinking and causing a lot of attention, that that can help downtown business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I begin my comments, there was a point of order that I would like to have straightened out regarding Roman numeral three, which Marnie read over, but according to the printout that I got offline just an hour ago, she left off the last part of that sentence. So I'd like to know whether that sentence exists the same way you see it, the same way it is online.
Ms. Sherman, he's referring to item, the item description of illuminated signs located. You referring to the end of the sentence, the animation prohibition for lighting or parts of buildings?
After the last comma, it says, "or animation prohibition for lighting outlining parts of a building or its ornamental features," which makes no sense. And I'm hoping that's not on your copy.
Item three. Maintain the current allowance for illuminated signs of any size or number, as long as they do not display flashing intermittent lights, lights changing degrees of intensity. Or animation prohibition for lighting outlining parts of a building or its ornamental features. Is that last portion of the sentence that you don't understand?
Yes. I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Yes. This line says, "or animated prohibition of outlining..." Doesn't make sense.
Describe what that means.
Did you have a comment?
I might have a comment, if we're in English.
All right. Well, it's describing, maybe you could explain what that means, Ms. Sherman. It's a specific prohibition for...
Or animation prohibition for lighting outlining parts of a building or its ornamental features. That's supposed to be one of the things you're not supposed to explain. So have you not explained an animated...
Yeah. Just a minute, Ms. Farley.
The purpose of this section would be to allow people to have illuminated signs within their buildings without a permit, as long as they don't blink, flash, or have any type of animation.
That's all.
There may be some cleaning up of that, but that is the point.
It simply refers to signs that are animated in some way.
So you will have the opportunity to clean it up. You're not voting on it tonight, because if you're voting on it tonight...
Ms. Farley, we're going to start the clock on you here.
Okay. You can start the clock. I'm Sanford Farley, 1305 Caroline Street, 22401. I had the distinction of being around when the last time we had a sign ordinance change. The town looked pretty crappy back then, if any of you all remember that, and the sign ordinance did improve things. And I was hoping the next time that we had a sign ordinance change, that we would take another step forward. And in some respects, I think we have, you know. I commend greatly whoever proposed changing the LED program, you know, so that it's, you know, just black backgrounds and not allowing them for anybody at institutions. That's a great idea. On the other hand, there are a couple of big steps backward here, if I'm reading it correctly. Most egregious of this was Roman numeral two, where we're talking about the allowing or prohibiting the outlining of buildings' exteriors only. This implies that you're going to allow illuminating the insides of windows, outlining the insides of windows, which looks like crap, you know. I've seen this in other towns. I don't know of any place that they're doing it in Fredericksburg right now, except the Recreation Center, has got some green LED lighting running around. But what really looks bad is a window similar to theirs, or any window, with green neon lights tubing around every single pane of glass. If you can imagine that in downtown Fredericksburg, you know, that just screams, you know, low-class, tattoo-par Shanghai junkyard-type, you know, caliber neighborhood, the sort of thing we're trying to get away from. And we've done a darn good job of getting away from it, I might add. One of the reasons that downtown is so successful now is because we have tasteful lighting. You know, it brings down people, it doesn't put off a lot of people, you know, by having gaudy, junky-looking lighting such as this outlining of, outlining the insides of windows. So I would strongly encourage you to get rid of that aspect of it, because that's going really in the wrong direction. Another thing, that if I'm reading it correctly, is that we used to have, in the previous ordinance, a prohibition against having costumed characters waving at the traffic, trying to encourage customers. That seems to be dropped, you know. I think it should have stayed. You know, this is another low-class activity, not as low-class as running neon around all the inside of your windows, but still, I think Fredericksburg is above that. If you want to see that, you can go down Route 3. They've got mattresses waving at you, and raindrops, and cows, and statues of liberty, you know. So you can get plenty of that, possibly in your county. And so I would like, I would like then to take the low road, and for us to take the high road, and not have this, have these windows outlined on the inside, either by LED lights or neon, especially neon, that's what really looks bad, but either one, LED or neon lighting, it's, you know, it's a shabby appearance, and it goes against what we're trying to accomplish in Fredericksburg. Another thing, return to the prohibition against the characters waving at you. I can see that the way this is going is there's businesses trying to outdo each other and trying to get attention, that the characters are going to get crazier and crazier. Pretty soon, you'll have bikini-clad models out there. Not that I would complain about it, it's been too much myself, but that sort of thing that would bring down the caliber of the neighborhood, and also would probably increase automobile accidents by a magnitude of 10 or more. So, but... So, but I would appreciate y'all considering those two changes in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farley. Is anyone else?
And Madam Mayor and other members of the city council, my name is Charlie Payne Law from Hertford Freischer. We represent Rappaport Companies, obviously the largest commercial retail property owner in the city of Fredericksburg. In many ways, we know them as Central Park. They have three electronic variable message boards and I believe one LED board at their site. The proposal that is before the city council today caught us a little bit by surprise, although this process has been out there for some time. So we're not trying to necessarily upset the apple cart this evening, but we do want you to take a look at, obviously revise and review, if you will, what the impact of this may be on businesses like Rappaport. Obviously, as a large commercial retail property owner that depends on marketing to tenants and attracting tenants and retaining tenants at this large footprint, which is obviously very important from a tax-based perspective to the city of Fredericksburg, this type of ordinance could have a significant impact. I know that in many ways, this does not necessarily have the same type of application to downtown. I've heard a lot of comments about downtown. That's not what we're talking about here today. We're talking about large commercial retail marketing and the impact that this type of ordinance may have as a prohibition to that for future development and redevelopment and basically this revival of Central Park. So it's really important to my client that you take another look at this, bring them to the table if that's feasible and reasonable to do, so that you can get their expertise, their background, their vision as to how this process can move forward with some sort of compatible change to this, this current draft. And at the same time, assist them, as they assist the city, as a co-business partner in moving forward. In many ways, how these type of entities market is extraordinarily important. If you think about what is across the street from them, a very similar use, that is not going to take their electronic messaging board, at least to my knowledge, away. They're going to expand their ability to market in any way that will attract the same consumers and tenants that we're trying to attract, so you could put us at a market disadvantage by eliminating the opportunity for us to have this type of messaging system. Let's not also forget that this type of messaging system also helps us retain businesses in the city of Fredericksburg, Freelance Star, for example, which has a similar type of messaging board in the uptown area of Central Park. So again, we respectfully request that you take another look at this, invite some of the stakeholders at the table who would be mostly impacted by this prohibition, although we understand the grandfathering component of this. But there is a plan by my client to have new signs of similar nature, of the electronic variable messaging board and LED, which is the future in their, in their minds, their professional minds, this is the future of assisting these type of large commercial retail developments. So with that, I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Hello, my name is Shahid and I own three businesses in Fredericksburg and some of those left, right, or other county and city. I heard Mr. Sherman told me a while back, and they're changing the electronics media, taking away all of the sign. But today's advanced world, electronics media and LED sign is just starting. We haven't went to, the advanced technology is coming. So city of Fredericksburg is supposed to be going more forward, not to stop new technology. And all of the advertising is support the small businesses. Small businesses mean for us or for city or for everybody. That's what I'm going to say, so city needs to look one more time for electronics media. And I give you one more example, electronics media, it'd be world famous, World Trade Center. If they don't have LED sign, there's no advertising, so nobody know about what is a World Trade Center, nobody will go there. And same thing in Las Vegas, all of those electronic sign, LED sign, that's why people go there to entertainment and all of those stuff. So all of those media help for the businesses. Businesses, not only for our personal, it's for city, for everybody, our support, for everything. So I just want to request one more time, if you can look at one more time that ordinance you tried to pass about LED sign, or maybe if you have some safety issue, maybe you go a little bit more restriction than just totally stop them. So that's my request. Thank you for listening, Mr. Mayor, and also I'm going to say thank you for Mr. Sherman. Every time I need a help, and she's really helpful and helped me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else who would like to speak? Yes.
I'm Mike Harvey with Harvey Signs located here in Fredericksburg. And I've got a friend of mine along with me, Paul Gardner from Sign. Sign Enterprise, you changed your name. I think there are a lot of misconceptions about what you can do to regulate electronic message centers without banning them from commercial use. I was caught a little bit off guard by not following the planning process all the way through, although I was asked and did provide some input in the beginning of the review of the signage ordinance, and I appreciated that very much. It was, the banning of the electronic message centers was not on the table at that time, came along later, and I should have been following the planning process a little bit closer. But that being said, I would like to have the opportunity to provide counsel with some of the many ways that you can restrict electronic message centers without outright banning them for commercial use. I'm not even sure that limiting them to institutional use and singling out gas stations is not going to be subject to a legal challenge. The, the industry is, takes a dim view, and I'm talking about those who manufacture these signs. They take a dim view of outright bans on these types of signs. And they have come up with a number of ways and suggestions on how to control them, from the illumination to the amount of time that, that they go. Paul and I, well, we don't even understand why counsel is looking at possibly taking this to a five-second message. These messages should not change probably more than every eight seconds. Why are we going, why are we going backwards with more, more displays? So there are a lot of things about this that I think counsel could use some more input on. I would hope to be able to provide some of that in writing for consideration during your work session. I was going to go over some of that, but I don't think it's, we need to right now. The manufacturer of many of these electronic message centers have the ability to put in at manufacturer and guarantee that certain brightnesses at certain times of day. Let me just give you an example. Electronic message centers in the daytime are programmed by latitude and longitude settings of where the sign is to be at 10 times the brightness in the day, and they drop down to less than 10% of that daytime brightness at night. And the manufacturer can put these things in there so those things are mandated, they happen, and they get certifiable. Okay. There, there are just a whole number of things that can be looked at to regulate these and to get away from this outright ban on them.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. We look forward to your input. Is anyone else?
Not including the signs.
This, this, this is to speak to the topic at hand, which is the repealing and replacing the sign provisions. So, yes, if you have something on that topic, please, please share.
So I'm Paul Gardner with Sign Enterprise. Obviously, I have a business here in the city, but I'm also a resident, 1100 Stafford Avenue. And unfortunately, I didn't hear about this until a few days ago. A client showed up at my office and kind of was distraught about it. They were rushing to try to put together a sign package for their business as they had put this into their budget for the upcoming years, but now they're trying to get it pushed through quickly. And thanks to Marnie, she made them aware of it. And so they made me aware of it, and then obviously I read what was in the paper. And interestingly enough, I just got back from Las Vegas and I visited the largest sign company in the United States, which is a friend of mine's. And it was funny, I was walking around and looking at all these big signs, he's like, "The sign regulation in Las Vegas is horrible." I was laughing when this young lady said something about it. But anyways, I know one of the concerns always is with the EMCs is that people use the terminology, "We don't want to look like Las Vegas," when the natural ingredients for displaying multiple tenant panels would be a pylon sign, which tends to clutter up the signage and it makes it hard to read, to be honest with you. And so EMCs really have taken it to another level. I know we were involved with the Westwood Office Park and doing the EMC for them, and when they put that sign in, he just was overwhelmed. He told me, you know, this particular owner owns properties in other, other cities and other counties, and he was telling me, "Paul, we're going to put an EMC on every, you know, and every business I have, I want to put these." He goes, "My," he goes, "literally overnight, I filled, you know, tenant spaces that I have not had filled for years." And as you can imagine, Westwood Office Park, who has multiple tenants, some of those tenants aren't recognized, and it gave him the opportunity to advertise his business accordingly. So I made a little illustration I threw together real quick here, and I'll, I'll just end with this, but this was just an illustration I did, just to kind of show what one of our clients is, has put together as far as what they have now, which is Westwood Village, and kind of a rendering of what they were considering. And as you can tell, it's probably a little less Las Vegas than, you know, the current sign. So in some ways, it actually helps rectify the Las Vegas look. And if that is a concern, and I know some of you have that concern as well, I just thought that would be a good little illustration. I think a lot of people have already spoken on my behalf on how I feel about it, but I would, you know, hope that you would consider more counsel on this and hopefully, you know, we can come to a solution that would be good for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. You might want to leave that here.
It's a good visual.
It is an excellent visual, actual, actually. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Going once, going twice. Hearing and seeing none, I will declare, well, actually, I wanted to call on counsel, I've not given counsel a chance. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for all the comments and also read the comments of others before the Planning It is an interesting issue and there's pros and cons to it, obviously. A little concerned, I've got a lot of people when I'm sitting around there and saying, "Well, what's going on in this place?" And I kind of go, "Well, I don't know." Well, you're a council member, you're supposed to know everything that's going on in the city. And all of us here, one, have other jobs and two, have boards and commissions we serve on that take a lot of time and effort and we don't always pick up on everything. So the first time I really heard about this was one paper, two, some irate phone calls and emails. I want to thank staff for coming back and making the recommendation early on about possibility of work session. I definitely think that's the direction we need to go on this. But I would ask a few things in regards to not just this issue. The original intent was to bring this in line with recent court rulings, and it kind of went in a different direction, and I fully understand that the Planning Commission, if they so desire, can do that. I guess my only concern here was, when we were briefed on it initially, this was, with regards to electronic signs, was not even something on our radar screen that we talked about as a council, which is probably something we should have had some initial conversations on. And then are now getting it Thursday and reading and figuring out what is, is going on with this. So a lot of times, when I get information, it is because staff comes to me and says, "By the way, understand, things are changing a little bit on this front. This is what we're going to do." And in this particular issue, I want to thank staff at one level of, you know, my big thing has always been, if we're going to make ordinance changes, the businesses or the people that are directly affected should be part of the conversation, and I know we brought them in to a point, but when it kind of went sideways, and we posted it and we did everything that we are legally obligated to do, and we've had this conversation before, not everybody reads it, not everybody sees it, not everybody understands what they are. And if we had people directly involved in this conversation to help us moving forward with this ordinance, it might have been a good idea to kind of pick up and say, "Hey, guys, things have changed a little bit, what do you think about this?" So we can make a recommendation. That's just for, for moving on in the future. Again, we can't, I try to read everything and do everything I can, obviously, but sometimes I do need a little nod, you know, tap on the shoulder, and I kind of depend on staff to do that. And it would have been nice to have a little bit better handle on where this was going than, than what we received. But I do think it's a good idea that we move forward with the work session. As the business community, especially downtown business community, has a concern, and it's an understandable concern about neon lighting and everything else like that, and the council did discuss this with staff and kind of wanted to go in that direction, which also indicates how important downtown is to us. And I was, would suggest to my colleagues, and I would love to hear them also speak on this, and I know everybody will, that we potentially direct staff to go ahead and set up a work session where we delve in this a little bit more. I would hope that we can do it and spend the work session on this topic and not three or four other topics where we're rushing through everything to get to where we need to go. But I do think that there are certain areas that this council probably agree is, we don't want to see electronic signs in the downtown historic district. And I would think some of the neighborhoods would be concerned about having them in commercial transitional areas and the impacts they potentially have there. So if staff were looking for direction, we might start with, let's not, let's look at not having them in, in the commercial downtown and potentially commercial transitional. Everything else is open for discussion, and I think we've heard some very good ideas here this evening from, from the community that does this on a regular basis, which I think is a great example of why we need to reach out beyond the boundaries of City Hall when we make rules and ordinances and bring in the people that are impacted by it. It's not always a situation where they're out to get something, it's frankly, they're the people who have a lot more information than we do on, on moving certain issues forward. So that would be my recommendation, is that we move forward with a work session, a good work session, not crammed in before a meeting with three other work sessions in it, and start maybe at no electronic signs in the commercial downtown and commercial transitional. Thank you.
Counselor Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do agree that we need to look at this further, but I would like to thank staff for bringing it to us at this point. You know, we've had discussions about it, and I think staff and Planning Commission were reacting to things we did talk about, and we're bringing something back to us. But I think we've heard and seen that there may be some very specific issues that we haven't quite maybe considered the long-term effect of. And I think the issues are, you know, lighting versus signage, we really haven't, you know, there's, there's are sometimes two separate issues in the downtown areas especially. And I do agree that I would not like to see electronic messaging centers in the historic district. I think that's something that I would agree with Mr. Farley on, that it would be tacky, maybe. But the historic district is very different than Central Park and Route Three and Route One and different corridors. So I think making sure that we really look at them very specifically and align things. I guess I was surprised to hear that Central Park's future relies on an electronic messaging center, but so be it if that's the case. But I think we're in worse trouble than I thought, if that's the case. So again, there's plenty of issues for us to still consider. And but I do want to thank everyone for bringing them to us, making sure that we hear them. And we will, I hope, have a work session and work through these. So please, if you have very specific comments and suggestions, please submit them to Ms. Sherman or one of us, and we'll get them there and give us some things to go on. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ellis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Cart's way before the horse on this one, without question. I've talked with one of the planning commissioners at length today about this, and of course, read the minutes that we all have. And what started out as a question before the planning commissioner of, "Do we go eight seconds or five?" Blossomed to, "What's before us now." Way too fast, outside of their swim lane. We make policy, they don't. So again, the cart way before the horse. Looking forward to going back to the drawing board on this, getting feedback from many of those who spoke tonight. And we'll start from scratch. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. I am certainly supportive of spending some more time on this and learning about it. And I'm especially eager to learn from folks in the city who have ideas about this. I find Mr. Gardner's presentation intriguing. I will say that my inclination, coming here tonight, was to express my concern about the proliferation of illuminated signs that we see in Route 3 West, west of town. And I, I think I have in my mind a fear about a kind of arms race about illuminated signs. But I'm certainly open to learning more about how that might be regulated effectively in those highly commercialized areas. I would hesitate to embrace Route 1 having the appearance that Route 3 West does in terms of its illuminated signage. But again, I'm eager to be educated about it, too. So thank you.
I think what I'm learning, just briefly even tonight, is that the technology is changing so rapidly that the concept that we all have of illuminated signs may be an outmoded technology. And as Ms. Harvey and Mr. Gardner have indicated to us, you know, there are, there are many things you can do, and there are signs, there are illuminated signs and there are illuminated signs, okay? Obviously, the electronic message center does not have to look like the most garish, you know, 25 different colors, 45 different things blinking at you, that may be the picture that comes to our eyes. So I welcome the opportunity to learn more and to explore this, this matter more. And I think to do so, Counselor Fry, did you want to make a comment? I was gonna make the suggestion that we keep this public hearing open until it comes back to council. And between, we will receive, be able to receive input. Staff will reach out to folks, and we will be able to work through it also in a work session. Counselor Fry, did you have a comment to make?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. This is the part that I like, because, you know, the citizens and the business owners, they come in and y'all let us know what's going on, you know, on your side, because we get it in a packet and we read it, and we try to digest it and try to think, well, how, you know, what is the effect? But when we hear from you all, it's really effective. But one thing I just wanted to say, in a sense, we, I mean, not in a sense, but we have to appreciate the fact that the business owners decided to come to Fredericksburg and be in the city of Fredericksburg, because you can start your business anywhere. And I'm sitting here thinking right now about the one little section of Spotsylvania near the courthouse where they created a Carolina Street, pretty much. And they could have, you know, their own antique stores and so on and so forth, just like we have in Fredericksburg. There could be a Blue Shark, you know, in that area if they want to recreate what we have. Of course, we can recreate history in our, in our buildings and all. But as technology changes, you know, some, you know, with respect for history, somehow we do have to move forward. And for business owners, if I'm, you know, the late night, there's not many late night spots to grab a slice of pizza. And even with my schedule, I like to see the red illuminated pizza sign at Benny's, you know, that they have a slice of pizza at night or whatever. But so, you know, there's different opinions on it. Blue Shark, you know, just, they have a color in their name. So you would think, you know, you would want to see something blue. Or maybe Mrs. Repas would want to see something blue that represents, you know, her business. You know, because everybody, you know, wants to compete in different areas of, hey, my store's over here. It may be an antique store there on the block, but I want you to see mine. So I'm glad that you all came. And I mean, it's, it's really important, because it's like, if we're gonna be historic Fredericksburg, it's almost like, I'm looking at it like, so pretty soon we'll say, "We don't want any cars on Carolina Street. We want to have some buggy." You know, because it's historic, you know, we want it to look like this, but that's not where we am. So once again, I appreciate all the comments. It really helps us digest everything that's going on besides reading it in our packets. So that's all I have, Mayor Greenlaw.
Thank you. So the consensus is, we don't, we don't need to vote on anything, because we've chosen not to vote on anything. So I'm, I'm going to look at the head nods and listen to the comments. And we're gonna ask staff to prepare a work session, and this public hearing will remain, will remain open. Hopefully, we can get back to this, maybe the first week meeting in July, Mr. City Manager? Or do you want to confine yourself to a time?
Well, we will certainly prioritize the next opportunity. 27th of June or July 11th are the next two meetings. City Attorney's not.
The city attorney's. The 27th of June is just such a short turnaround. That packet is due on Tuesday, and it doesn't give the staff enough time to really, they want a chance to dig in and to take advantage of some of the comments.
So I'm thinking July 11th.
Yes, at least July 11th.
At least, okay.
One meeting in July, we'll target the July 11th meeting.
Okay. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna get a little bit ahead of our Planning Director, Mr. Johnson, who whenever we get in this situation, also always comes back with, "Can you give me some idea of direction that the council wants to go?" And I would like us to basically say, the initial direction is, I think there is consensus on the council that we don't want to see these in the commercial downtown and the CT areas around the commercial downtown. I'm not saying we can't eventually change our mind, but I would like to give them a sense that that's the direction we're looking to go.
Well, I think we really haven't had the chance to discuss that. Mrs. Sherman?
I do want to point out, and this was included in your package, the options that we presented to the Planning Commission. There were options, there were four options in regard to the electronic variable message signs. Option number two may address what you're asking us to consider. So we could certainly add about 12 more options if you'd like. But there are four starting options that we can hopefully start with, the conversation at the work session, and then as you see, we can add it.
And I would suggest that we start there. Yes. Okay. Thank you. And thank all of you who have come to participate in this, in this public hearing. Officer Athan, Athenri? Did I say that correctly? Thank you so much for being with us this evening. Counselor Jander, does any counselor wish to add anything to the council agenda? Whoa. I have gotten ahead of the agenda, I apologize. The next item is Item 6, Comments From The Public. And this is a period, a period of time when we allow folks to speak on any topic. There's, please observe the limit of five minutes. We have, you have to sign up before the meeting to speak at this time. And we have two people who have signed up before the meeting. Dr. James Schlesinger?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jim Schlesinger, I live in Mary Washington Square. And on December 13th of last year, myself and some of my neighbors appeared before this council regarding 1210 Sophia Street. We discussed condition of the property, requested that it be demolished. Council passed a motion to apply to the ARB for a certificate of appropriateness to relocate and if successful, to demolish the structure. The vote was seven to nothing. On January 9th, 2017, the ARB met and a motion was passed by a vote of five to one to approve the application. During that meeting, was stated by Mr. McFarland that, quote, "The property will be removed after five months," end of quote. That time period passed last week. Please recall that 1210 Sophia was purchased by the city in '06 with the intent initially of being demolished to allow the space to be utilized by the library. Despite city ownership, the property has not been cared for, the grounds are not maintained, and no progress was made to utilize, relocate, rehabilitate, or demolish the building. I contacted the city shortly after June 1st to find out when the deadline would occur and what would occur next. And was told there was now a new date of September 22nd to receive proposals to move the building. No date has been set for demolition. I was told the request for relocating, relocating was not sent out until May 4th, four months after the ARB decision. Initially, it was mentioned the city had not done anything like this before and wanted to be careful, but I have since been told that was incorrect, and the city has done similar things in the past. With a new deadline of September 22nd, is it possible to give a timetable for demolition should no proposal be received? And what occurs if a proposal comes through in early September? Where do we stand timewise then? I feel that the citizens of the historic district, to invest a lot of money into their properties, to upkeep these properties, to improve these properties, landscaping and invested deserve a better response from the city. I wonder how this would have been handled, if this had been a privately owned property? I mean, pictures from that property last summer over the year have been overgrown, disrepair, garbage in the yard, rats in the yard, and people in the building. Again, I wonder how that would have been handled, had it been privately owned. I respectfully ask the council to help us understand why there was a four-month delay in soliciting proposals, and give us a date by which we can expect something definite to occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schlesinger. Mr. James Lawrence?
Aloha. I see Matt Kelly finally made it to the big time, he got Gordon Shelton's old chair. My name is J.C. Law. It's J.A.S.E.E.L.A.W. I changed it when I left Fredericksburg, but you may remember me as James Lawrence. I live on the island of Maui. Imagine what a tourist from Hawaii would see if he visited downtown Fredericksburg. There are plenty people, just like Maui. There are plenty restaurants, just like Maui. There are plenty shops, just like Maui. There's even beaches when the tide is out, and stand-up paddleboards and kayaks, just like Maui. A visitor from Hawaii would like Fredericksburg, because of all the good things we have. But there's one thing you haven't got a lot of, of all the good things you have, that would make downtown better. Benches. Please put the bench back on the sidewalk in front of the visitor's center. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. The next item on our agenda is the council agenda. Does any counselor wish to add anything to the council agenda? Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
I'd like to add 1210 Sophia Street.
Thank you. I would like to add Fourth of July holiday. So 12, 1210 Sophia will actually be A, and Fourth of July holiday will be B. I should explain that Vice Mayor Weathers is attending his grandson's graduation as we speak. So his item of Virginia Municipal League Committee recommendations will be deferred until our next meeting. Counselor Fry, did you wish to add something?
Yeah, just a quick comment, you can, you can title it MLK Ceremony, thank you.
All right, MLK Ceremony will be Item 7C. Anyone else? I'll call on Counselor Fry. I mean Counselor, Counselor Devine? Counselor Devine, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. People usually confuse Charlie and I, so that's fine. I just wanted to see if our city manager would address the issue at 1210 Sophia Street, which is an ongoing issue for the neighborhood and the community, so.
Yeah, I think an explanation's in order, thank you for putting that on.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I was hired on June 27th. This matter came to my attention in July, and we began to move on it fairly quickly. By December, we were prepared to present to the council our desire to have the matter addressed properly, as was envisioned a decade earlier. We worked quickly to take the matter to, after receiving approval from the council and direction from the council, we moved to the ARB. ARB decided after significant conversation that if they would approve it under condition that it be out for the private sector review for potential removal for a five-month period. We committed to taking that five-month period into consideration as we put an RFP on the street. The RFP did take a lot longer than we expected. In fact, it took us several months to get it right. On top of everything else, city staff was working on, we made this a priority. Again, it did take a bit of time. We had hoped to have it out in February, didn't happen until, I think Dr. Schlesinger said May 4th. I would have said late April, but I'm sure you're right about that. Bottom line is, we are now on a path to have the matter addressed and fully comply with the ARB recommendations by September, which I have suggested means that by the end of the calendar year, we'd have the building demoed. That is the current path, and that's sort of how we got from A to B. I'd be happy to take any further questions and ask Mr. Whitley if he thinks I've missed anything.
Just a quick correction, that it, with apologies to Dr. Schlesinger, the RFP was released in April, April 21st, which is how we got to the September 22nd. There was a pre, or I guess a post-RFP release, a inspection meeting. That was in early May, so that may be the source of confusion. We did have two contractors come. So the purpose of the five months was to back up a second. The ARB requested that we allow this to open bid, and the city has offered a $20,000 incentive if there is a qualified and reasonable proposal to move this house, as opposed to demo it. And so, and we're incenting that. So the proposals, the proposal period, which, there are aspects that are, I would suggest, a little unique. Are we surplusing this property, or are we buying someone to move it? With one, you're selling something, with the other, you're buying something. So that's, we did struggle a little bit with that, and I apologize for the delay. But the, the $20,000, you know, we would, the, give ourselves a little bit of a window. So if someone walked in the door, day one, we wouldn't be obligated to take that. So that period, we would hold those proposals, and that period has now passed. We can now take any proposal, evaluate it, and if it's acceptable to the city, and we would bring it back to everybody, ARB here, then we could, we could act on that. The acceptability would be, it would be moved and saved, the building. If not, and then there's no proposals going forward, we can proceed to demo the building. The ARB certificate of appropriateness also requires a Phase 1 archaeological study, which the Planning Department is going to help us with obtaining quotes and getting that process underway as well. The other thing they required was a, some sort of historical marker or denotation for the old Walker House. So there are several requirements, apologize for the delay, and that's the path we're on.
Ms. Devine?
Well, I was wondering if Mr. Burdy or Mr. Whitley would be able to address Dr. Schlesinger's question about a timeline, should a, an offer come in in September? What, what would the timeline look like if we were looking at considering an offer at that point?
Be glad to address that. The, the RFP document, which is on our website, does allow up to 100 days. So conceivably, although I would say unlikely, if someone walked in the door on September 20th with an acceptable proposal, more than likely, what we'd do is probably stop the clock, because we would need some time to evaluate whether or not this proposal would actually serve the purpose of saving the building. But if we decided, you know, instantly that it would... But if we decided, you know, instantly that it would, then you would conceivably have 100 days from there. I would suggest that that's unlikely. We can move forward with a process of procuring a demolition contingent upon no proposals that are acceptable being received, so that we could accelerate, you know, into September, October, arranging with a contractor and sort of notifying them, giving them a notice to proceed after that deadline has passed, so that this could happen fairly quickly after that deadline has passed. But the 100 days is what was, is up to 100 days, this was listed in the proposal, and we would certainly work with a contractor that could move the building. If they outlined a timeline, and they were showing really good faith, and they had a really good prospect of moving the building, then our interest, I think, would switch more towards how can we make this happen? But in no event would it keep, you know, dragging on past the end of the calendar year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weathers and Mr. Buridi. Item 7B is Fourth of July. The governor of Virginia has declared July 3rd a holiday for all state employees, and I would like to suggest that we follow suit for our city employees, as we often do with holiday times.
Madam Mayor, I move that we declare July 3rd, Monday, July 3rd, as a holiday for our city employees.
Second.
We have his motion, and we have a second. Is any discussion? Please cast your votes. Counselor Fry.
I'd like to ask Mr. Buridi and Mr. Whitley to maybe contact all of the department heads and let the employees know that we agreed to do that for them. Sometimes it's good for them to know that, you know, that we're looking out for them.
Yes, sir. Word will go out certainly tomorrow morning.
I don't think it'll take long. But with the fourth following on a Tuesday, that makes, that's a very sensible weekend. All righty. Have you cast your votes?
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. Item 7C, MLK Ceremony. Counselor Fry.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. I just wanted to thank council first, I mean, everybody in the memorials commission, everybody who's involved in making the MLK Memorial Bridge happen in the city of Fredericksburg. With the ceremony, there were a few names that didn't quite make it to the program. We had some volunteers that came out on the Saturday, and I apologize myself for the names that didn't quite make it. I did my part to get them in, but something happened, so, not to make excuses, but I just wanted to take this moment right now to thank our city residents who came in and volunteered to help the event be a success. And those names I want to recognize are Mr. Ricky White, who played keyboards and fielded and did a lot out there, and Mr. Harry Wilson, a local jazz artist, actually, who I think is called the xylophone, or I went and said it the wrong way. I call it rocking the bells, that's what I call it, vibes. I call it the bells. But they came out and assisted the Thompson and Armstead family for the ceremony, and I just wanted to make sure that they were recognized somehow, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. They certainly added a lot to the festivity. Item number eight is our consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
Move approval of consent agenda.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Item 8B, please.
Counselor Duffy.
Okay.
Item 8B.
I'll move the consent agenda pulling item B.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Counselor Duffy, item 8B.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight the fact that the Memorials Advisory Commission has submitted three names for the Wall of Honor. Donna Cody, legendary librarian, Robert Allen Hodge, historian and Eleanor Mary Overly Johnson, educator and volunteer in the community, and just wanted the public to know about that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move item B.
Oh, thank you. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six-zero.
We have before us one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, I think nine or 10 sets of minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes of both the work sessions, public hearing, and the regular session?
Madam Mayor, I move the minutes of the work session on March 14th, the work session on March 28th, the work session on April 4th, the work session on April 11th, the work session on April 12th, the work session on April 18th, the work session on April 25th, the public hearing on May 23rd, the record session on May 23rd. See, we work hard. Be approved with, as transcribed.
Thank you. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six-zero.
We have several boards and commissions with applications from very wonderful citizens who have volunteered to serve on our boards and cons, various boards and commissions. On the first, item 10A, is an appointment to the Recreation Commission. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Duffy.
We have such a wealth of great candidates, but I'll say Mr. Bailey and Ms. Sargent.
Counselor Devine.
Sorry. I also would say Mr. Bailey could be, because he's a reappointment, he has served well, and Sue Sargent.
Counselor Ellis.
James Bailey, Sue Sargent.
Counselor Fry.
James Bailey, Janice Olson.
Counselor Kelly.
I'll go Janice Olson and Sue Sargent.
Mayor Greenlaw.
James Bailey and Sue Sargent.
James Bailey and Sue Sargent, with, both have, Bailey has five votes, and Sue Sargent has five.
Thank you. Item 10B is an appointment to the Rappahannock Community Services Board, and again, we have three excellent candidates, and we appreciate every application we have received. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Duffy.
Tina Sears.
Counselor Devine.
Tina Sears.
Counselor Ellis.
Tina Sears.
Counselor Fry.
Tina Sears.
Counselor Kelly.
Tina Sears.
Mayor Greenlaw.
Tina Sears. Thank you for being willing to serve. Item 10C is an appointment to the Rappahannock Emergency Medical Services, and we have one applicant, one recommendation for that appointment.
Madam Mayor, I move Scott Davis.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six-zero.
We now come to the city manager's agenda. Item 11A is a revolution, a resolution initiating amendments to the UDO. I will call upon Mr. Craig.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Airbnb, another hosting platform, has been a hot topic over the last few years on both the state and local level. At the state level, this year, the General Assembly passed SB 1578, which preserved locality's ability to regulate what we'll call limited residential lodging uses, but generally Airbnb type of platform uses. The resolution before council tonight would initiate a text amendment establishing this as a use listed in the Unified Development Ordinance. The ordinance would differentiate between limited residential lodgings and commercial bed and breakfasts, which our ordinance currently does not do. The ordinance would define a limited residential lodging as an accessory use within an existing dwelling unit. The ordinance would also quantify certain variables about how the use could operate. Things that are under consideration based on the work session that we had with city council would be a potential rooms or occupants limit. Currently, the ordinance is listed as three and six, but there is interest in reducing that to two rooms for guests and four occupants. Parking requirement, whether or not it's appropriate to require parking, whether people can legitimately provide parking for a lower intensity use like this, especially in our historic neighborhoods. And a potential maximum number of nights per year the lodging may be rented. These are all things that we will be working through the public hearing process with the planning commission on before bringing it back to you all, if initiated. The ordinance would also modify the bed and breakfast definition to clarify that it is more commercial nature and is the principal use of the property. This type of use would be proposed to be permitted in all zoning districts to permit dwelling units. It would be by right, and it would be an accessory use of the dwelling unit. It would still require a business license to ensure the operator was paying all required transient and business taxes. The business license would require a zoning permit, which would ensure adherence to the standards that are to be established and conceptualized in the ordinance that's attached to the resolution. If initiated, the planning commission would have a public hearing on this item on July 12th. It would come back before you all if everything moved forward from the planning commission that evening for public hearing on August 8th. Again, this is a resolution initiating the UDO text amendment. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Craig?
Madam Mayor, I'll move the resolution initiating amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance to regulate short-term rentals of residential properties and to make technical amendments to the bed and breakfast in regulations.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Item 11B is a resolution amending the budget. Ms. Jett?
Hello? City Council is asked to approve a resolution authorizing the use of $97,346 of sewer fund contingency for the purchase of nitrogen and phosphorus credits in order to meet DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, permit regulations. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution, which requires one reading. The Code of Virginia established the Chesapeake Bay Watershed Nutrient Credit Exchange Program. The city of Fredericksburg belongs to the nutrient, the Virginia Nutrient Credit Exchange. This is a voluntary association of municipal wastewater treatment facilities. The association provides treatment plant operators the opportunity to buy or sell nutrient, nitrogen and phosphorus credits. This is a common practice among plant operators. In fiscal year 2017, the city purchased nutrient credits for compliance year 2016. The city of Fredericksburg nutrient discharges at the wastewater treatment plant were in excess of the established limits for nitrogen and phosphorus. In order to comply with the discharge permit, the city is required to purchase credits. The city will purchase approximately 89,000 of nutrient credits and 8,000 in phosphorus credits. This was not included in the FY 17 budget. However, we expect that we will need to purchase credits again in FY 18, and 180 was included in the FY 18 budget for the purchase of credits. This resolution would reduce contingency in the sewer fund by $98,000 to, with the remaining balance, in the sewer enterprise fund of $68,427.
Any questions for Ms. Jett? Counselor Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While it may be common practice, I guess it bothers me to know that we're not necessarily in compliance or over. What would it cost to get us in compliance so that we don't need to purchase those credits?
We are going through the permit process again in August of this year. We, as part of this permit process, there's lots of issues between the city and Spotsylvania that will be evaluated, but it really depends year to year, and you kind of need a history to see exactly where the trends are going. And yes, at some point, it does make sense to upgrade your plant when the cost of purchasing the credits exceeds, like, the debt service on plants. I cannot give you a figure of what it would cost to upgrade the plant, but we're talking, you know, between 10 and 20 million. I could not give you an exact figure now, but I think over the course of the next year, we'll have a better idea of what we could do and what that would cost if necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Counselor Duffy?
Are these excesses a matter of individual events or just kind of inefficient systems?
That is something that Public Works would have to answer. But I did ask them about that, and I don't think they have a firm answer, but it looks like the treatment plant is trending that way. However, we need more of a history to determine that.
Mr. Buridi?
Madam Mayor, I'd also suggest or notify mayor and council that we're actively working to get with Spotsylvania. We are an active, I wouldn't call them negotiations, but discussions about the future of our wastewater treatment plant and the potential, I'd say potential, underline that, of potential consolidation of efforts long-term. So we are actively engaged with Spotsylvania, our partners, on collaborating on the future of wastewater needs with the county. We think that makes the most sense, and in that conversation, we'll have sort of a better sense about the future. We are preparing to come back to council at some point later this year with that conversation.
Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jumping just a little bit ahead, and I don't know, but I'm looking at our capital improvement plan for wastewater, which takes us out to 2022, and we had this discussion earlier on just the exact point we talked about with potentials of some major capital improvements. I'm assuming then we are looking at some potential changes to our long-term capital plan in regards to wastewater improvements in, within this timeframe, or are you saying we're going to pull this out longer than what's on the list?
We are currently undergoing a study. The city and the county have done a study about the options for the systems.
Right, and we know what's, got a pretty good handle what Spotsylvania wants to do.
Right. So the city is currently in the process of doing a study, looking at it from the city's perspective. So until we get the results of this and have a chance to analyze it, can't give you a firm answer, but I do believe that we'll have something by the time, the next CIP process.
So in other words, we are looking at something within the confines of this timeframe that we are currently looking at in the next few minutes?
I don't think it would be within the context of that timeframe.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Ms. Jett? All right. This is a resolution. It requires a vote. Yes, Counselor Duffy?
I'll move amending the fiscal year 2017 budget by using $97,346 of sewer enterprise fund contingency for the Virginia Nutrient Credits Exchange.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes, motion passes six-zero.
And now, Ms. Jett, will you speak to the 2022 capital improvement plan to which Counselor Kelly was referring?
Sure. We're transmitting summary sheets of the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2019 through 2022. The fiscal year 2018 CIP was approved, and those funds were appropriated as part of the 2018 budget process. So city council is asked to consider the attached resolution for approval of the fiscal years 2019 through 22 CIP at a future meeting. As part of the budget process, the city adopts an annual capital budget that includes capital improvements for education, public works, public facilities, public safety, and courts, as well as improvements to the water and wastewater system. The CIP includes an additional four years of projects and references certain projects beyond that timeframe. Each year, the CIP is reviewed and updated as new projects are identified and existing projects and cost estimates are available. The CIP was presented to council in the city manager's recommended budget on March 14th. It was presented to the- It was presented to the Planning Commission on March 15th for their review and comment. The CIP was also the topic of City Council work sessions on April 4th, and it was discussed at various other points throughout the budget process. The CIP reflects a substantial investment, the substantial investment that is required to maintain and improve core public infrastructure and to advance council stated priorities. As I said, the FY '18 projects were approved and funds were appropriated as part of the budget process. The remaining of the year of C, the remaining years of the CIP may be adopted to communicate the city's ongoing capital planning efforts. Funds will need to be appropriated in future fiscal years for the projects listed in years 2019 through 2022. The CIP process will continue to be revised and refined over the next few fiscal years. One notable change in the next budget cycle is timing. The CIP process will begin in the fall with capital submissions due to the city manager before the operating budget requests, so we'll be coming to you earlier in the year with that. If fully funded, the CEIP represents an investment of approximately $93 million of general government improvements and approximately $18 million in enterprise fund, the water and wastewater improvements. So this is just a transmittal, and no action is expected today.
Thank you. Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know we're all looking forward to FY 2018 and getting, moving forward on the Riverfront Park, but we've, discussions up to this point referring to a Phase 1, Phase 2, and we've got the $5 million here. When are we going to be able to get definitive word on exactly what we're getting, or it's going to be encompassed in that $5 million? I know we're looking at coming up with planning. I just want to give the public some sense of when we're going to have an idea of what those numbers are going to be.
Madam Mayor, to Counsel Kelly's question, we do envision a 50% plan completion by September, October this year, so we certainly, as we inform board at the approval of us moving forward with the creation of the construction documents, we do, we do envision coming back to council at that point. So again, by the end of September, that should be more clear as far as whether or not we're on task with the, the construction and the current budget. We believe everything's in order. We had a two-hour meeting this morning on this very topic with our consultant and Doug Fawcett, so we believe we're heading down the right path. Again, we'll, we'll inform council September timeframe.
Thank you.
Also plan to come back at 90% completion so that you have an opportunity to see where we are right before we get into sort of final document crafting.
Okay.
One last question, Madam Mayor. Looking at following year, 2019, we're still listing the Liberty Place Park and Garage Agreement. I'm assuming that potentially is going to change?
I think it's fair to assume that that, that, that will change. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Ellis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to put a reminder out to the council and City Managers. Well, we got a couple of really good suggestions last night at the Idowal community feedback where, I forget the gentleman's name, Andy, I believe was his first name. The request that he had, which was ADA access to the VCR trail there, right at the trailhead there at Idowal and, and one other downtown, doesn't seem too unreasonable. I don't know what, you know, the cost would actually be, but if money surfaces or if, who knows, whether it's Commonwealth transportation, money, pockets, small pockets of money surface. Earmarketing for something like that would be, I think, money well spent so folks with wheelchairs, et cetera, can get on the trail.
Very good enhancement.
And maybe, you know, carriages.
Madam Mayor, I would say to those specific requirements or requests from the Idowal community, we have recently undertaken an effort to get a cost estimate that we are working to refine on ADA access at that very point. We're also delighted now that we own the property that's required to create the connectivity from VCR to Idowal. I wouldn't tell you that that's a plan that's moving forward quickly, but that's also on our radar as far as connecting VCR to Idowal.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further from council on the capital improvements plan? And I presume this is available on our website for our taxpayers?
It will be posted tomorrow.
Okay, it'll be up tomorrow. All righty. City Manager's update?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just quickly, I'll highlight a couple of issues. I want to commend council and the mayor for taking time out of their busy schedule. More importantly, I want to thank the public for engaging in a robust way in conversations regarding your 20-year vision. We're delighted to be welcomed by the Mayfield community as well as the Idowal community, and we also had a great turnout at Dorothy Hart Center last week. So we do, again, appreciate community input on your vision. We still welcome that community input. You can reach the City Manager's office at 372-1010, as always. Also highlight the fact that we had a great success story, a great team effort, FOR and city staff led by Parks and Rec have spent significant time. Lauren Cato with our Safety Office also participated, and River Steward, again, a great collaborative effort to reduce the significant graffiti, negative graffiti impacts on our riverfront. Most of that has been addressed, and we're grateful for it. Obviously, we've stepped up efforts to reduce, repeat graffiti efforts along the riverfront, so know that the city is, is very aggressive on eliminating graffiti and preventing it from coming back. Also highlight the third annual badges for baseball returns to the city. We're delighted that, again, the Police Department is cooperating with Sunshine Ballpark Foundation. A great event will happen for our youngsters June 19th through the 23rd. Anyone with questions or who wants to participate, please contact Lieutenant Jack McGovern. He can be reached at 540-903-1478. Also, again, thank Germana for their great forward progress, collaborative effort by the city and the EDA to open what we call Fred Cat, which is a vocational offering, educational offering, that is now open at Central Park. We're, again, grateful for Germana's many contributions to offering that workforce development opportunity in our backyard. And lastly, I'll just, again, thank Parks and Rec for their great annual effort. Rock the River event attracted some 8,000 people again this year, so great work there. And I know that folks had a great time, once again, in the city. Great efforts on all fronts to host events in the city, and we're seeing, I think, great results of, of that new focus with folks getting excited about, again, coming to the city and spending money and having fun. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions from City Manager? Thank you. The calendar is attached to the City Manager's report. We do have a closed session. Would someone make that motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to go into closed session to discuss the acquisition of real property for a public purpose on a portion of the Liberty Place property at 608 Amelia Street and 605 William Street for public parking, and Dixon Street for the possible expansion of Dixon Park, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining positions or negotiating, negotiating strategy of the City Council under Virginia Code 2.2-371183.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six-zero.
We will, we will move upstairs for our closed session.